So, you know, I expected him. He was one of the four for the one last. So we need him. Text them.
That's really nice.
It's me.
But he can't approve the minutes, whichever type of anyone. He was the fourth person that was here last week or last night.
Yeah, for that and for one, I'm just gonna hit it right now. So we're still, but it's a different.
He's okay though?
That's me.
I. A lot of, uh, of timber and some.
No, it wasn't terrible. I mean, a pabletree like this came down and took out my power.
Pretty terrible.
Two days.
Did you have power back in two days? Beautiful. Our normal meeting time is six o'clock, but we have one member who were, uh, was here for the last meeting. And we need him here for this one in order to move ahead with a couple of things. We're just gonna take a minute here and see if we can reach out to him.
So Kevin, Kevin has somebody, buddy. Um, which means we, you know, there are four members that were here for the meeting minutes, we needed that, or four of those. Uh, so we should have to roll those into the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then the, the big issue ends up becoming, uh, I don't remember. Uh, for all these four members that were at the hearing, uh, can vote on that because the hearings.
That's really unfair. Somebody off another month because he didn't even clear.
I mean, you guys can vote on it and do it. I think it'll just technically not be legal.
I don't wanna do that, but that's really unfortunate.
Yeah.
We like to try to not make people wait months and months and hoops for things.
Right.
Cause yeah.
I, I don't know the way to fix it. We would've, we would've had to.
Did anybody even speak at the public hearing? Well, then what did we miss exactly? The opening of public session?
There was one, one person that had some questions.
Oh, okay. So somebody did speak. Okay.
Yeah. They're here again tonight. That differs. We, we can't redo the public hearing because that, that was in the publication as well. That we made a year ago.
This is the one that you, you wouldn't have a special meeting, but you can intervene.
I think it was this that they were doing a special meeting for. Oh, this is the problem. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, number eight is the, is the issue. So.
He will be. He just tabled again to next to me. I think that's the way it has to go. Um, I can. And that is such a pain. Um, I can call lawyer and see if I can catch him on his cell phone. See, see if there's a way that we can get that to go through. Like so. For the call.
Okay.
See if I can get him. So, and then, yeah, you can continue to go with that.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at six oh five. Don't township planning commission. July thirtieth. Start with your call. Dave, I am here. Jesse is excused. Todd, Eric Lee.
Here.
John, here. Casey.
Here.
And Kevin is not here. All right, so. Approval of the agenda. I think we have one thing that we're going to add. I think if somebody is here trying to have a question in the comment section, they're going to, that's what this memo is for. Have just some questions on the special event. And we'll offer that up to them at that point, but really don't have to add it in there. They'll just make that comment. Um, moving to the minutes, I need to move that to next meeting because we got not that proxy at least this point for that.
I would like to point out that there's an error in it though. It says adjournment, that it was motioned by me that to adjourn the meeting and I was not here. So it had to be somebody else who made the motion.
You need to make a same motion for adjournment.
Oh. Very true.
Let's get it out.
To adjourn, you were not here, so.
Oh, well, Lee said we have to go back. I make a motion to approve the agenda.
That one.
Agenda.
Yep, I'm sorry. Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh.
Yeah, sorry. No.
Wait, see if he comes back, but. There's some lawyer.
Okay, okay. Lawyer's not there.
We'll just table the approval of the minutes. For next meeting and we're up to public comment, so.
Well, can you direct for the next meeting to have Steven fix the adjournment?
Commenting?
Yes, with minutes because it says my name and it's not me.
I think actually that was, I think I made that motion, so. I know who it was. We just have to put down, cross out Casey and put down Dave. All right, we are up to public comment. Now, we have some public comments. Um, we have public hearings that we have a couple items that we're here for tonight. And we have a public comment right now. This is just the general comment. Uh, we did have someone in that same venue that wanted some information or asked some questions on the special events. They certainly at that time, that is the time that you would be able to ask some questions on that. Otherwise, if anyone else has any other things that aren't on the agenda farther down tonight. Um, if you do have a moment, I'd like make, uh, like to use that time. You have three minutes to ask your questions and we can kind of move on from there. So I will open up the public comment at six.
Hey, do you want to make some comments? Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Mike Taylor and some of you may have known me out at twenty nine eighty seven Pillen Road. Exesumatory for about thirty eight years now. Own security for most of the parts, but anyway, my wife and I, um, have an additional five acres behind my home there on twenty nine eighty seven. We were thinking about doing a event barn for special weddings. And we were actually here today to actually kind of talk more to see what their thoughts are. Just have. This, these are some of the, this is the picture actually. This is about the barn that we're about to trade to build. Um, it's gonna be high end barn. It's gonna be run it down. Many couples and things like that. Directly. Uh, our hours will be early. We'll shut down by eleven o'clock at night. We're gonna have everybody have to move out and be done by their, with their venue, but. Events tonight, we're just kind of looking for any comments that you guys have or anything that we should step forward to, to go ahead with the program like this. This is all new to us, so it's, uh, kind of a new venture. I've been involved in several different businesses, but this is one that's gonna be probably the last of mine. Because this barn here is gonna be a very expensive barn to build, but we plan to catering more to a high end people than, we don't want riffraffs coming out of Neverland Everland destroy the barn and, you know, raise fights and problems around everybody, so. If anyone has any questions or any comments, things they should look to doing or.
He's usually with, with neighbors. Having good relationships and that always helps if you can get them to understand what you're doing because there is some residential, I think, right? Not too far from you down there. So it didn't come in off of Pillen or are you gonna come in off of?
We come off of McMillan Road. Never off the dirt road there. Um, and the neighbors I do know, pretty much all the neighbors, I've been friends with all the neighbors who are out there, so. But I will discuss it all with them too and make sure that before we move on, that first we have you guys' approval. Neighbors' approval that they're gonna come with, that, um, allows to let them know it's just not gonna be a bunch of greatest young kids out there partying in the backfield or something. You know, it's gonna be a high end agenda.
And it'll be all enclosed, everything inside. There's not gonna be any outside events or anything like that?
It won't be much for outside. There may be a wedding, um, venue outside possibly. Um, but everything, the barn we're looking to build is gonna be thirty two hundred square foot. And then the outside may be used for the, a wedding. They come in to have a gazebo out there and benches seating and stuff like that. And afterwards, it'll be everything will be inside.
Some music and everything would be inside and.
That's correct.
That's usually the, the noise thing when we go till eleven o'clock. You know how that's, that's the first thing we hear about. What they'll do is if it's something that's brought forward and we do bring it for public hearing, anybody within a certain radius of that, I don't remember what the exact measurement is. Then you're, uh, from your parcel will get a letter stating that there's a public hearing and they'll have an opportunity to, you know, bring any concerns and things like that. So it's good if you do it ahead of time.
Sure.
Do a little bit, ask the question and say, hey, here's what I'm thinking. It's not a thing from left field. It's the surprise factor for people that typically when they get the, what's this? They're doing what?
I definitely agree with you on that. And then the five acres, the barn will actually be set basically in the center of that five acre parcel, so. It won't be adjoining people's, you know, they're, well, actually I own the other section. Cemetery actually owns the other section, so.
Gotcha.
Um, but then, um, I do know all the other neighbors that's just behind me. So in fact, I sold that property to my neighbors that are behind me now. Years ago, I sectioned that off to two point six eight, two point five acre parcel. And then sold one to Steve and then sold one to, uh, they were down the road there raw, so.
Well, one side, you won't disturb too many people. That's one thing we can be sure of.
That's correct.
So that would be my only thing. I, I think the idea has been, we pay a lot of interest in these types of things and trying to do it and you own the property and it's, it's a gen, it's gonna be on the existing property. That's all part of your existing property. It's not its, its own parcel, correct?
That's on its own parcel and, well, there's three parcels there. I have the main five acre parcel that, uh, my house sits on. Then there's two additional parcels or two point five acre parcels and they'll be both adjoining the five acre.
Okay. Okay.
I have an add that, um, I'm sure you know, just wanna look into, uh, the, uh, provisions of alcohol. Uh, you wanna look into things like can the fire department access it easily, the right, right of ways, the width of your road or whatever it is. Um, um, public restrooms, things like that, you know, parking spaces have.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna make this completely, you know, by law and, and by ordinances and by everything that the fire department has to say. Just so that when they come in, I think this facility is gonna be probably one of the best we hope to make in, you know, this area and maybe the state of Michigan. We've been to many of them and some are nice, real nice, and, and some are like, holy cow, it's like they pulled the hay out of that barn, you know, so.
We're tired of traveling to weddings all over Michigan. It'd be nice to have one someplace close by and so. Have one here.
Well, and exactly. And I think this is the next line area where we don't, we don't have something like that built out chip and and it's gonna raise a lot of revenue in for the existing gas stations and restaurants and public dis- situations like that too, so. I believe it's gonna be a good revenue making for everyone and first I'm sure my dad's making local, but it'd be nice to be outside.
Uh, you know, one thing that's nice to say, I don't have anything to do with that.
All right.
That's, uh, but I can't promise you anything I have either. All right. Well, very good. I would say work with Steven on following, um, all the requirements out there. We'll have a site plan that you'll need to follow and make sure all the things are met with that. As far as the building height, all the different types of things. There's some things and limitations you have to have as well as we mentioned. You know, lighting and any concerns like that so it doesn't, you know, go towards other, other homes and.
Right.
Parking spaces. You have to meet a certain number of parking spaces. You have to have that answered on there also, but. Um, the idea sounds like it'd be something that, you know, again, with all the i's dotted and t's crossed, it'd be something that we would definitely look at.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that has a public comment tonight? All right, six, sixteen, number four is the public comment. We do have a couple items up for public hearing tonight. Uh, we have D C twenty four dash oh three for forty two sixty one Whitehall Road and two vacant lots. We have a person here for that. All right, if you wanna step up here, generally what we'll do first, give you the opportunity to kind of explain exactly what it is you're looking to do and that way we'll ask you to sit down again and then we'll, uh, open up the public hearing, give people a chance to ask some questions. At that point, we'll have the questions asked of the board. And then we may direct at them just so we keep everything. Sometimes these, I won't say this group doesn't look like a hostile group. But we've added before, people can get heated and discussing and wanting things. We just like it to come through us so that when we kind of keep everybody. Um, so go ahead and give us a chance to hear what you're looking to do.
Okay, well, um, the property that's in question here was purchased in two thousand eighteen as commercial property, which is what I'm asking it to be. Um, somewhere, I don't know how, but, um, some, if you look up in the M L S or the, your, where you look up, I'm sorry, the Muskegon G I S. It's already zoned commercial and you guys have it zoned as residential. The property's been used as commercial for as long as I know. I've used it as commercial for a boat rental business. Um, so I'm just asking for it to be put in your books, what it's supposed to have been to begin with. I don't know how it got mixed up. So that's what I'm asking.
Okay. It says, it said it fits with the master plan and basically fits a lot of the things that would be present for, uh, wanting to make that change though. Steven, you have any questions?
Well, how is it so? It was currently, Steven says it is zoned, it looks like seventeen dash twenty is zoned low density residential. So on the map, the one that's to the left of that is currently zoned residential. The other two, the other one is C one. The parcel behind it is landlocked. You can't get to it except for through that one. So, so that one does make sense to. One to the east. East side of Whitehall Road is currently zoned.
All right, very good. I think we'll, uh, we'll open up our public hearing at this point. And see if we have any, has any questions that we might be able to answer at this point, so. All right. See, yeah, go ahead. You can take your seat there and. I'm gonna open up the public hearing for Z C twenty four dash oh three forty two sixty one Whitehall Road at six nineteen. If you would like to make a comment on this or any of our public hearings tonight, first thing you do is you stand up and just give us your name and your address so we can get that for the record. So is anyone that would like to make a comment on this? We're not pushing, but it's a full opportunity if there is anyone that would like to say anything. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at six twenty. Any questions on this from? The board?
It's too bad Steve's not here because it says that the place where the well driller was, which is the main parcel that fronts Whitehall Road, was previously zoned C one, but he doesn't tell, does anybody know the circumstances of that rezoning, why it's, why it's not C one anymore? The other two parcels have always appeared to be residential, but that, that well driller business was C one.
Yeah, I'm not sure when it was done.
Right. Did I miss it anywhere? In there where he tells us why the circumstances are changing at the first time? Did somebody request it or? Did it just do it by itself? Are we sure it's not zoned C two or, or C one already?
I do not see anything further in the reading that explains.
Okay.
Uh, and again, I read through it pretty thoroughly, but I didn't.
I did too and, uh, yeah, I didn't know he wasn't gonna be here. I would've sent an email asking for clarification on that. But I know we don't like to go back and forth and back and forth and so I just wondered. Because it's, it's been a commercial business for like twenty years. So how in the world did it get zoned anything but commercial?
I think it's my public comment.
If you know, I'd vote for you. I was just saying, okay, I run the rans for that piece of property when I was going around. Uh, when I would talk to Steve, he said that it was accidentally sold to somebody before. So we just wanted to get it cleared up. So that's why we came in, so.
They changed it accidentally to R one.
Oh.
So it was on, somewhere in, in the, somewhere here on staff made the change.
Okay.
Clerical, is it a clerical error? Is that what he said?
Yes.
Okay, so it's like, so if that's the case.
So if you, that's what I'm saying. If you look up the Muskegon G I S, it doesn't show that at all. It shows it all commercial property.
All three parcels?
Yeah, all the parcels, except one kind.
The landlocked one.
The one that ends in twenty?
Yeah.
The wooden one?
That's the one.
That's always been residential that you do? That's what I thought.
Public hearing letters would have gone out to those other properties. I'm gonna, I said, if I was gonna have a question is, has anyone said anything as that would be a commercial with that there but other businesses are already theirs, but it's not like.
Right, and it's always been a business. It's been the business on the corner and then the vacant parcel. But then another business. It's been like that for twenty or twenty five years, so.
I would get it out of the master plan. That is what it is.
Right.
It does have for the. So I guess the proposal will be the, if we need, can we say if it does need to be changed, be approved?
Yeah.
If it doesn't, then we just, uh, need to add the one that.
Right.
Changing.
So I think it's hard to do anything without Steve being here tonight.
Well, I don't think so. I think it's pretty simple and straightforward because the one is R one for sure. Right, so you're rezoning.
Right.
So the other one, however, right, aliens came down and landed and changed the zoning and that's irrelevant because you already have to have the hearing to rezone the one. So the other one's included, doesn't change.
I see what you're saying.
Okay.
So if it was only the one that there was a mistake on, maybe a process would be.
Good to have King Solomon here for, you know.
Let the bait.
It's C two.
Yeah.
Did you pull up the G I S?
Yeah, the front, the front parcel, like I said, proposed to him is C two, right? That one is C two, it says.
So we can approve it as O B C two.
Mm-hmm.
And it would cover everything. So that is our intent. That sounds like what everyone, any? Everybody kind of agree on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There is a sample motion that I think would work very well.
Did you close the public comment in the hearing?
Yes, yep, we did. Um, at six, six nineteen, we opened it. Six twenty, we closed.
I make a motion to recommend that the township board approve the ordinance. Rezone parcel sixty one oh seven oh one nine, one hundred zero zero one seven one zero and sixty one oh seven oh one nine zero 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 one seven two oh. And sixty one oh seven oh one nine one zero 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 one eight zero zero along Whitehall Road.
All right.
We'll take a roll call, hold on this one.
Dave?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Casey?
Yes.
That one moves forward. All right, next up we have S U twenty three dash oh six and S P R twenty four dash ten for thirty one seventy Whitehall Road. Any warehousing and self-storage? All right, again, we'll do the same thing. We'll have you come up here and tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do.
Sky Grumville, thirty one seventy Whitehall Road. Right now I have a thirty by forty barn on there. I use for my gutter company. I also have a forty by eighty for garage doors. I use for my pole barn company. I'm looking to add on another, basically eight more doors, hundred and sixty more feet and start renting some out as large storage units for boats, campers. You know, some that's a little larger, get it? Uh, they will have power of a couple outlets for battery tenders, a couple lights. They will not have heat. They will not have water. It will not be working. It's just storage.
And it says you're looking, you're, you have the desire to make one large building rather than the two forty eight hundred?
I would like to, however, if the engineer tells me I have to do fire suppression once I get over X amount of square footage. Nobody can answer that except for supposedly the engineer, I guess. Um, and I will do two separate buildings. I'll add forty foot onto the one that's there and then I'll do another one that's a hundred and twenty foot, leave a gap between. Okay, with no water, it's hard to do fire suppression and it's a little pricey.
Yeah, okay. Does it give us kind of what to use as far as the verbiage on there? That was something we wanted to go with, so. All right, any other questions? Anyone else? All right, go ahead and have a seat. We'll, we'll have the public hearing here. I am gonna open up the public hearing for S U twenty three dash oh six and S P R twenty four dash ten at thirty one seventy Whitehall Road. And do that at six twenty eight. Any comments? Easy group tonight. This is all right. All right, I will go ahead. Hearing none. I will close it at six twenty eight. Any board concern discussion? It does say that the site plan also approved a relocation of the existing driveway, which it hasn't been completed that date, but the approval of the site plan would renew the approval to relocate the ground, so. Take that.
And that's the, built that, that other building to use?
Yeah. Any dimensions of the building? With the height? It does say there is overall height, height in writing, but it's not on the drawing. I don't know if that matters. And as long as we have it, you, you're good with that. Repeat that as part of it.
Do these storage units be aided with any sort of security?
At the moment, no.
Just in and out, whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
Blue lines, does this indicate the, the parcel we're speaking of?
Correct.
Okay, so it goes way back into the woods there?
Goes all the way to the bike path.
Okay.
And if it were to be the one building, it would just be the connection of those two buildings.
Correct.
Correct. Hey, anyone? Having concerns or questions? Would you put the motion?
Any plans for a sort of signage? I don't see.
I don't plan on putting signage out there.
That's another one, if you do decide to do that, check with Stephen as far as. Then. Allowable, this one wants to approve. Do we make that motion as part of it, just sign within condition? I think I'm putting it in. You don't have to, you just have to come back later. Make a motion to approve. All right, see the price made. Price of numbers. Okay, go.
Make motion to approve special land use permit, SU twenty-four dash zero six and site plan review, SPR twenty-four dash ten, with the condition of a single building with a total area of ninety-six hundred square feet may be approved by the zoning administrator instead of two buildings at forty-eight hundred square feet as initially submitted, if the applicant subject, submits a new site plan showing a single ninety-six foot, ninety-six hundred square foot building.
Support. Roll call. A?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
B?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
D C?
Yes.
That moves forward.
Fair enough.
All right, next up, we do have the township board minutes. Is a planning and zoning staff report also? And we haven't heard anything. Confirmation that Kevin was coming. Can try the lawyer one more time. This is our predicament, uh, tonight for your proposal. We have, we have to have a quorum of four. And we have a quorum of three from the meeting, so what may end up happening, if we can get a lawyer on the phone that can give us a way that we move forward with it, we've already had the public hearing, because we've already had the public hearing. We have to have, we can't go back and revisit that, so we have to move forward, and we'd have to have a vote. We wouldn't be able to have a vote, because we don't have a quorum. So maybe apologize upfront, we may have to table that again until next month. I can be here next month as part of that last month.
Why did we have a meeting when we were in the middle of an actual disaster?
Um, to move business forward. There was, there was no reason not to. The only thing we had issues with were the lights not being on.
There was one question, there was a sign on the door, said township was closed until hours restored. Didn't say the meeting was still on. It said township's closed and hours restored.
That's true. Can I put the sign up?
I assume there's no meeting.
Todd will not be here next month, and he is one of the four.
Let me ask this question. I've applied for two permits. I've applied for a site plan approval. Applied for a special use. If I drop a special use permit, that was necessary. Cause we're gonna keep dragging this thing out. I mean, this whole project. It basically from the way, the way it looks right now, this whole project's not gonna be here. Cause we're, we're not gonna come in and take truckload of sand out. Must do this project in like three callouts. Each of projects where he's in there, he's out. We just keep pushing this thing out. It gets to the point where, you know, a year and a half, we, we're not, you know, missed last month because whatever. Now we're talking another. We keep pushing. We're at two years, and for my plan, cause I'm, I'm a year out from that. And you know, it comes to a certain point where I just gotta say to myself. You know, I'm getting old. I can't wait forever on this. Whereas if I had to work, I'd just switch over, and I'd have to talk to excavator where I'm at. I'm not gonna end up with two acres, but I can throw up a lot of sand, and I think I, I grab all this.
I'm not sure I'm saying.
If I'm not mistaken, I could come for a site plan approval. Basically, what I'm looking to do is muck a pond, thirty-year-old pond, who's mucked a pond. I have low areas, I'm, I'm gonna, probably in a couple of years, two, three years, I'm gonna come for a permit to put an additional grass. I know that. I'm either gonna put an additional grass or put a, a addition on my current grass. Either way, I need sand. So the whole thought was I bought my pond, the sand I used, I've researched the stock in the pond. I had talked to Roger Jordan about it. And the thought was to get close to a two acre pond. What I'm looking at doing, that's what they said to you. Like I said, if we're gonna keep pushing this thing out, I don't know if it makes sense that we, that we just turn around. I mean, I guess at this point, I'd want, I'd, I'd ask for a refund on my special use permit. But, but what I'm understanding.
It might be possible, if you follow what's in the parameters, where you wouldn't need a special use permit.
Special use permit is just allow me to all stand up the property, isn't it?
Seems like it. And so, and then the other option might be, we just might have to re-up the hearing. So basically, either had to have advocate show up at the last meeting, or more commissioners show up at the last meeting, or all four of the commissioners show up at this meeting. Because all three of those things have happened.
Can we re, can we have another rehearing?
That's, that's what I'm worried about. I've been acquiring that too. So let's look at the special use, if we can drop it, just move forward with, uh, site plan review, or if we can just re-establish, redo the hearing on the same item.
Yeah, the other issue I have is, you extend this another month, what questions, from what I'm understanding are coming up. What is this gonna do to, for, what is this gonna do to neighboring wells? And I have a knowledgeable well driller right here that can answer these questions, and a month he's not available. So, I suppose. At some point, I guess, I just throw one.
Could we have any discussion?
Out. Yeah, bunch of discussions.
Cause I know that the couple that has some questions on it is here, that, that's the letter that I think would be, the person that has the answers that we definitely don't have. Would be somebody here, if we can initiate at least that to where makes sense to address that.
Okay, we have, we have, we have copies of all, all the neighboring well records, I guess. Brian, Brian's drilled a few wells in his day, he's excavated quite a few of these wells, it's much answered. Lot more telltale than I can, probably more telltale than.
So would however you want to do that, essentially just have another public comment. I know Todd's got something, I know Lee's got something. I mean, you could just kind of explain the issues with the aquifer, you asked the question.
Let's just, let's do that. We'll make this a, let's do this as a public comment.
Could we have a special meeting over the week?
That's what I was just gonna say.
The result was?
Cause I think if, you know, the fact that we were talking about doing a special meeting?
Yeah.
But we didn't need it happen?
Yeah.
That's true, because we've already had the hearing, we could potentially have a special meeting, we shouldn't have to send all the notices, do all the publications.
Yeah.
It's been a long period of time.
Um.
So it could be a quick turnaround.
And that, I mean, but it costs a thing, correct?
No, it's, I mean, it's, it's not like it happens.
Just, just, it's, it's not, it doesn't cost them, so like, if we could
Yep.
just reconvene in, in a week.
So that could work.
Just to, to get this going.
As long as we're.
I would agree with that, yeah, like, that going on, I'd like to. Yeah.
We just need to make sure Kevin is here for that, and we would be set.
Yeah, all, all four of the people.
Right, it's right here.
Okay, so now, if we open up the public comment, we should do some of the dialogue now to.
Have the discussion down, resolve the issues, or at least get the answers.
Make sure your questions are answered, that you presented a lot of things that we currently, and I know you were the couple that had mentioned several things and that you had questions on that we didn't have answers for, if you have someone here can speak to that. Why don't I go ahead at six forty-three, we'll go ahead and open up a special comment section here. Maybe the best place to start, you did, did you have the list of the comments and questions that were being asked? Okay. Would you prefer to have them ask the questions of, of like, okay, are we glad you did? If you guys wanna go ahead and ask your questions, and then he can write answers hopefully, and if there's any that we have, that that's probably our best option, so if you wanna go ahead and ask your questions, so.
But discussion or assistance was found, do you have any effect on the aquifer?
I couldn't hear the last.
I can't hear you either, I'm sorry, sir. Give it to the podium, I'll help.
First question was, and I know he's asked questions, I'm gonna question, but this is the girl. Um, how deep is the pond? How deep is it?
Right now, with, right now, the way the contract is written, the maximum, maximum elevation is fifteen foot existing elevation. What I need is, that's what we're, ultimately what I need, or what I'm looking for is eight to twelve feet of water, ideally ten feet of water, that's what I want.
Um, how what impact will the hauling of trucks on Riley Thompson? The, the gravel that you're talking about on, on the newly paved road out here, and I don't know if we've had somebody from the road commission here that can address that?
We did get some answers on that, and what was the?
So the concern was going east versus west, largely the concern on that. And so if they go west, it's a longer route, and they go over two culvers to one railroad crossing. If they go east, they go over the right drain portion, but they get out to N one twenty fairly quickly. So that would minimize that. It's not specifically written up like that, but if the planning commission wanted to pass it, to say they needed to go east to one twenty, um, they could minimize road travel across checkovers.
Does that?
No, it's not a problem, but what that does is it extends the project. And that's where we're getting to, I, I thought we knew this, and that's where it extends it. So if we can go east and west, if the excavator gets a big job, he can haul from my site. If we can only go east, if his job is to the west, you know, every mile's money. Now he just limited jobs to, you know.
How many truckloads are we talking about, real estate?
Yeah, well, it's, truckloads, I can't tell you, but total excavation's around twenty thousand cubic yards. But a lot of that, you know, a lot of that's getting exhausted on site. Initially, you're gonna have, you're gonna have topsoil coming out of there. I got, I got areas that's supposed to have topsoil. So you gotta, you gotta get strip it, you gotta screen the topsoil, the whole topsoil.
So you're removing twenty thousand, exactly? And that, how much of that is staying on site?
I don't have a.
Rough, rough idea, even half? So the other ten would be, so about half, what originally would be, could potentially, and you're looking to be able to go both directions. If necessary.
Ideally, it makes the project, you know, exhaust project quicker.
I guess the question we'd have is, however are the trucks that are gonna be hauling material loaded? And what effect does that have on the pavement?
This is, this is.
It's a truck route.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Is the truck route road or not?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is it a mining truck that's gonna be hauling it down the road, or is it gonna be a regular truck?
It, I mean, it's a semi, it's a semi truck, but it's, it's.
So the road commission has previously expressed that this is somewhat soft soil on Riley Thompson, so they would like to limit use on it. That's, that's the road commission's engineers' take.
I don't know anything about roads. That was a question. I'm just verbalizing because you couldn't hear my husband, so I didn't.
Yeah, that's, that's something, you know. It's getting kind of road commission, probably not answering.
Okay. That's it?
I mean, I, I don't give you all, I'm not gonna, next phase. They got a real good idea away from these trucks when they're loading. You know? I gotta, I gotta believe this road was rated for that. I mean, I know for years they shut it down, but for years we were hauling out corner links. And we'd run a mess in front of my house for years. Wrong, they stopped it, which we done road, I get that.
That's why we're talking about the road.
Well, that's what it's for.
I, that's what I remember the upgrade was done, to do that, but is that their concern, just the soil is soft?
Oh, that's what he said, just the soil around the road is soft, basically.
So, is it a concern, or is it a, I mean, that information is.
It's, as far as I can tell, it's one of those things where the road commission would prefer to not have heavy trucks on the road in, in general, to make the life of roads last. Um, but as far as I understand, I think the, the road would hold up to this project. It just causes damage as, as normal damage accumulates out of roads, sexually.
That's why we have roads. I mean, it's, this is the whole purpose of roads, is to.
So can I ask a question? Does the township or does the highway commission hold the bond for any damage that is sustained during this project? I mean, is that fair?
The excavators.
Okay.
I, you know, and I've just, that wasn't a question on here, but, I mean.
The excavator on this, that, that was my concern right out. I worked with, with Rogers, Roger Jordan, worked with Roger on projects. First question I asked. What liability do I take for that road? That outfall.
And who is Roger? Is Roger?
Roger, no, it's not Roger. Roger Jordan is accurate excavators. He don't do on the job.
Do you wanna say something for the audience? It's like, you know.
I mean, I, yeah, I think it would be advised against, but it's not.
This is a legal truck. We can, you can drive up and down this road without a project all day long loaded. I mean, you could do it twenty, twenty-four hours a day, you can drive.
I mean, you could do it twenty, twenty-four hours a day, you can drive with a legal load size, this is not an overweight truck, this is a legally permitted truck, legally.
Yeah, and it's a, I mean, ultimately.
Unless you're trying, and I can't imagine trying to do it, unless you're trying to do, the, the spring and weight restrictions are on. And like I said, I, I, I can't imagine that happening. I mean, it wouldn't happen, there's weight restrictions on it.
This is not like a, a sand mine where they're gonna spend the next fifteen, twenty years pulling sand out of this thing, like.
It's like I said. Talking about it. We're restricted to go to the east, this probably be the year and a half, because he's not, he, the, the whole plan is to come in and dig to east, south, and west banks. First, we gotta widen my hauler so that he can get these, turn these in. Then he, then he's gotta bail my site up, gotta build a temporary gravel road on my site. But he can get in and out of our ground. But he wants to come in, he wants to get all this prep worked up, my site work is done. And then as he gets jobs that are, are, are large enough. Where he can come in and he can do this in a few haul outs. Like I said, he doesn't, he's, he, he wants to come in, well, I need to dump a little bit of sand, I'm gonna just get, that's not the stuff. It's gonna be, there, there's maybe these little spurts of activity and it's gonna like, he's been coming and going for a week, maybe two, I don't know. And it's gonna shut down. In, in, in that downtime, I don't doubt, by what he explained it to me. I don't doubt there's gonna be an area within, within the pond, there's probably gonna be two thousand cubic yards of sand, they don't want sitting there. But when the next one, next job comes, you got two thousand yards of these.
If we're talking twenty thousand. We said before. And we are, we have both ways to go, there may be jobs that could go east and there may be jobs that could go west, it's just saying if the job is west, they wanna be able to go west.
Well, what it does, it makes more sense for him to come to my house, if he can't go west, it's a lot more sense for him to use this. It's, the sand mining thing is kind of a decision, because I'm not quite in the same way, don't get me wrong, he is gonna make money, gotta, oh, he, you know, oh, you got an excavator in your backyard, they're pretty expensive. He's gotta make money, he's gotta get some of this. And that's what.
Maybe during this week, between tonight and our special meeting, hopefully that we. We can get some clarification from the road commission and table the road issue, are there any other objections tonight?
No, I think there are no objections, I don't wanna say that these are objections, they're just questions, because.
Or comments? Okay, comments.
We moved to the area two years ago, and, and then this, your, this first time is that the neighbor? And so.
I, I, I've lived here thirty years, the neighbor to my east, they've lived here. That's twenty-five, twenty-seven years, I spoke to him twice.
Well, see, and that's the thing, I, then we got this public notice, and, and when we talked to Steve, he said it could take five years. And we were like, five years, five years with the trucks coming up and down, back and forth?
I, I need to tell you, I'm sixty-five years old, that's why I'm telling you, if this doesn't happen, there comes a point where I gotta turn it off.
Sure.
Because ultimately I wanna stock it with fish, once the pond's dug, I gotta wait a year to stock it, and you're not stocking it, you know, you're stocking it with finger hooks, it's like. A lot of people walking with a cane out there fishing. So, that's what I'm saying, at some point, this is gonna keep dragging on.
So if, if we were to make it to where it was both directions as needed by the excavator. I mean, it may, like you said, may go east if he has one that way, or he can go west if he needs to go that way. And again, it is a rated road for that, I know that that was part of the reason that they did some of that, so as long as we're not in that soft soil. Like we always say, that we own during the truck limits or the load limit, I think we'll be okay.
Did we address the question about the aquifer? And I, I would, so let me read the question, will construction or existence of the proposed pond have an impact on the aquifer level of the pond?
Um, I'm Brian Brewer, uh, National Wells and Pumps, I'm retired, but that's what I did for many years. Is your address twenty-three forty-two?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe if I stand up, everybody can hear you better. So, your well is seventy foot deep. So, and just to put this in perspective, state code sets, you could dig that pond, as long as we place a well, ten foot from the pond that is not in a floodplain. That means no matter what happens with that water table, it cannot flood that well, we can legally drill a well with twenty-five foot casing close to the point. Your well is deep, you're not gonna have any impact on these deeper wells whatsoever. Okay? One thing I do like to be careful of, we did a mobile home park in Misskeegan years ago, we had the well drilled, the township meeting like this. And there was an agreement that if they dried up the neighbor's wells on Evanston, they would supply them water forever, because they were gonna be pumping water. So we got a call from the state that we had a big problem, I said, what's the problem? Well, you dried up one of the wells out front, you guys are gonna have to get in water, and I said, I think you got a bigger problem than what we've done, he goes, what's that, I said, we never put a pump in those wells yet. Cause they were building the park, so the people were trying to say that, you know, their well went dry because of the, the dish and it never even had been hooked up. Why I'm saying that, water changes, it has, your well is gonna have no bearing on what he does with that pond. Where you would have a bearing if you put a hundred houses, and everybody starts pumping out of that aquifer, things move. He's not pumping out of the aquifer, all he's doing is digging a fifteen foot hole. Okay? So if you had a fifteen foot well on the other side like we did in Fruitport. And we, the neighbor says it's impossible, you couldn't get a well by the house, we went three hundred foot back, crystal clear blue water. So we actually took and went up to the house and drilled that well, and it looked like coffee. So we put the well in the back three hundred foot away, I'm driving by, about a month later, what do I see, an excavator out digging a pond between the house and that well. I got on the phone, I called the owner, I said, if he keeps digging that pond, you're gonna wreck that well, why? I said, your well's fifteen foot deep, you're digging a fifteen foot deep pond, and we don't know where the bad and the good meets in there, and you're gonna dig through it, no, you've caused a problem. But what he is doing to that, absolutely no impact on what you're doing whatsoever. Okay?
Does that? Is that the question that you?
So you would say in your professional opinion, that there's not gonna be a chance of groundwater under that influence of surface water?
No.
To this project?
No.
You don't win late, see.
Will the pond be lined, or what's gonna stop?
That I have nothing to do with, I don't want to be like.
What will stop the water from entering the aquifer?
You're saying, well, one thing is you.
I'm not worried about flooding, I'm worried about what goes up the pond.
Well, first off, you can't put contamination in the pond, so your ground is actually, uh, cleaning there as it goes through the formation, so, okay? Now, if you look at a lot of these well records around here. Well, Jeff's well right across the street. When you get down to twelve feet at the well that we drilled in the front, gray sand, clay, fine saw. It's gonna stop because of the fine sands, it's gonna stop the transmission of contaminants going down more. If we go into a nitrate area, we'll do the same thing, you have nitrates in the groundwater already. We'll find, we like to find a real fine pack of sand that does not pump as good. Okay, you're not gonna get a well that pumps fifty gallons a minute, you're gonna maybe get a twelve gallon a minute well, but what that formation will do a lot of times, it stops the transmission of the nitrates from going down into that lower aquifer. And you have a lot of that in your well, I mean, if you take a look, I actually drilled a well in your residence, okay, okay, and we drilled that in two thousand and two. So, I don't know if you ever got a well record, I can give you this, but, uh, so your, your well record spurs out, you had dry sand at four foot, it's four foot water table all the way around here. Okay? So at four foot, if somebody pumps contamination, it's still gonna start going through the groundwater, whether it's a pond or not, and this man isn't gonna be putting contaminants around it, he wants that fish out. But then you go into turk sand, uh, at eleven foot, there was seven foot, gray clay saw, that was down to eighteen, there was seven foot at your house. So gray sand fine, six foot, down to twenty-four foot, clay again, two foot, sand two foot, clay three foot, sand five foot, sand and clay five foot. Gray sand down to nine foot, and then ten, uh, sand fine to medium fifteen feet, and then it was a ten gray sand fine down to seventy foot. So that would have to transmit through all of that to get there. Okay?
Understood. So, and so his pond will hold water.
Yes, it's always done, so does the lake hold water, and we can go up next to any lake and drill a well ten foot away also.
Sure.
That state code, as long as it isn't in floodplain, if it's in a floodplain, they won't let you do that.
Okay, I don't think it's floodplain.
No, you're not, but I'm saying, if that's the rules, that's all true. So you should be fine, that's. So he'd be worried about his well, just like he was worried about your, he was the first person I called when I got, so.
It's nice to have somebody with that much knowledge, because that's, that, I just got my education, that was, I appreciate that, that's.
I'm not waiting to play light on your concerns, because they're good.
No, no, and there's, I was just speaking because you weren't here.
Yes, no, and I, I didn't bring my hearing aids, that's why I told you earlier, so, no, I, I don't wanna, you know, take lightly on your concerns, because they're always a concern.
From the information that was provided us, we want him to have a successful project. Yeah, but if it's the pond is going to. To hold, provide access to the aquifer for wells. It's never gonna fill up, and it's gonna be a problem.
I have a doctor that we drilled a well in Hartshores, it's twelve foot deep. It went two hundred and some foot, and we didn't drill the deep well, I told him it's saltwater, and somebody else said, oh, we've got good water down there, and when it was saltwater, then he hired us to do the work. But what I'm telling you that, out back, he has a huge pond. And that water is always testing good, he has city water in the front, and he had Jeff to hook up the water, even though I told him he needs to start looking at hooking up to that water main. And that isn't good for business, but, you know, he has to filter it, um, and logically, I'd be looking at bringing a water line in that house. The reason is, with codes way out there today, if you needed to drill a new well, they likely are not gonna let him put another twelve foot well. So get the line in before it's a problem, that's been in probably thirty-five years already. So, do, am I concerned about a twelve foot well with a pond, I would have been if he wanted to put it way out back when we talked. Okay, so we had to take out groundwater flow, we didn't know that at that time, that was heading toward Lake Michigan. So he's way in the front way, probably at least three, four hundred feet from that pond. So there is always a concern, but you gotta do diligence, what he's doing should have no impact whatsoever. I just mentioned the other things, because sometimes people, well, the health department approved a subdivision off of, uh, McArthur years ago. And I got a call, and they said, we gotta ask you a couple of questions, I said, what, what's going on? Well, told me the subdivision, and he said, the test well was drilled, we didn't drill the test well, they had beautiful water. And now they got twenty-five homes in there pumping twenty gallons a minute. The water turned to sulfur, it was terrible. Okay? And he goes, what's going on, I said, do your math, I said, they're all putting twenty gallon a minute wells in. And I said, you're talking a ton of water coming out of that aquifer, so you're pouring it into that subdivision from somewhere. A test well doesn't fix all that when you drill it, but the more homes, sometimes you have a concern for that stuff. But in yours, I don't think you gotta worry. I'm gonna give you the logs, these are online, you can print logs, you can get the logs from all around your neighbors and everything.
And that's through the?
It's on my log.
Through the, through the health department?
That's on the state database, whenever we drill a well, the state gets a copy, the local health department gets a copy, the owner gets a copy, we have to maintain this. Okay? So there's five copies going in every well that's drilled. All right? And again, anything else, or?
That was our concern about the aquifer.
Okay, thank you.
You've talked about, about the, I mean.
Special meeting.
Special meetings days a week from now, or?
Somewhere around there, we'll have to make sure that the four people in the legal photo can be available.
And is that something that Steve will reach out to us, or?
We'll put a notice on the website, uh, you still know on the public notice portion, okay, if you wanna check that out.
Okay.
All right, that would be just to, because we don't have the four people that were here for that. Like this meeting. That's the only reason why we can't vote on it.
Does this, does this answer all the questions on the first thing we're trying? Back again?
Well, I think we got it pretty well answered, at least to our satisfaction, that it sounds like everything, what were, the questions that were asked, I think everyone had a legitimate concern, I think you answered it, I appreciate that. So it just sounds like we have to get the meeting and we have to just vote on it, so.
I think that was the sub, if I'm not mistaken, but I don't remember. It was a special meeting, I just don't remember what date he set up.
August seventh, you say?
I, I don't, like I said, I don't wanna even say that now, because I'm not sure, I can't remember, he had originally set it up, but then he didn't need to have that.
But we don't need to be there.
No, you wouldn't need to be there, I mean, that would be, it would just be, it'd probably be like a five minute meeting, it'd just be for us to come here, vote on it, and, that's true.
Yes, and it'll all have to be set up anew, because I have to make sure that Kevin can make it, and, so, and the three UBS as well. I mean, if there, is there a day that works for all three of you set up next week that, so, you don't matter, Lee, because you're, you matter in general, all right, I'll be down for this specific.
No.
Any word for Thursday?
I have a date on Thursday, Jeff.
Any, any day except for Wednesdays up until the twentieth.
Okay.
I'll make, whatever, I'll make anything work, but it can't be a Wednesday, and only until the twentieth.
Okay.
The one originally scheduled was on the seventh of August, that's what it was.
Yeah, which means John wouldn't be on mega, so we can't do that, sixth is the actual election day, so that's probably a, you know, sixteen hour election day thing, so probably wouldn't work, so I'm thinking Monday. Might be able to work off the double check with Kevin, and if that does work, then we'll have to get out of our postings, but those only have to be up eighteen hours before a special meeting. Try to set up for Mondays, like, stay.
This upcoming Monday or something?
Yes.
That work?
Yes.
Absolutely. All right, so you got three S's, so we just need to get Kevin.
Yep.
And Jeff need to be there for that, if we already have all the information, or we just need to?
It's up to you, if you're comfortable voting on it. I think issues have been addressed.
Yeah.
So.
Fifth, we should be able to go, it's up to you, like I said, just down the road, if you wanna stop in, we'll make it a short, short one, it'd be probably six o'clock again. Pretty short.
Yeah, we basically just had a perfect storm, unsevered intended, uh, to, to make. Double the length of August.
Yes.
Double, this double check, I mean, that's what we're looking to do, as long as we get Kevin, the main guy here that we, we're waiting on. I'm gonna get him for Monday, we could go.
You're gonna give your phone or email or something, just?
Yeah, you can get it to me.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, Jeff, Jeff will take us for you, I'll get it, I'll get it to see you, so we can, you can send you a notice.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, I mean, oh, good for him. But Jeff's up here, so. So, yeah, you just have to sort of, oh, that's for a while.
Anybody need a break?
Up to.
All right, I'm moving on, so that, got that one taken care of for number eight, number nine, you're up to new business, you have SPR twenty-four dash eleven hind row parcel. Uh, for condominium and final site plan approval for planned unit development. All right, so if you wanna step forward here, we kinda talk a little bit about, uh, what it is you're looking for here.
Getting all the paperwork.
Yes, we have, okay, okay.
And did we have a?
All right.
I know a lot.
Did you get the most recent one from the air? That we had, we. Oh, right, that we need to have ready. What happened was is, um. Jeff had, just sent an email that, uh, he just wanted to double check the water calculations, you know, make sure that the intention was right and everything else. This one, so, uh, no, that was, yeah, this is the one for like the water retention. There was a question about it. So what we did was we, right, Jeff had been there, double checked it. And I go back over and we back over, went over there and did the, did the, uh, did the digging a little bit and then we, um, what the site plan had. Make sure that that all was correct. On that, it's. Where can you go?
Were there any changes to the space name that the fire department have?
You were okay with it. You're okay with it, so that, okay, just happen like that. Right.
Yeah.
The water calculation was the one thing that came up hard, right, digits and, and levels to make sure that the water was retained. That was coming off all the, all the roofs and all the pavement everywhere. And we had it going up there, you know, up to six feet deep. And I don't think, when they did all the water calculation, we, we'd actually let it be. It looks like it's gonna be fifty foot wide, two foot deep. I'll say.
Probably get started about snow plowing, where, where it's going.
Yeah, all, all the snow plowing and it will end up, yeah, it'll end up there in those, with that setback, you know, far back. And they had to be right away with fifty feet, another fifty feet back.
Okay.
Little bit area.
Will your company be the broker when these go for sale?
I think it's probably, you have people that want the first of building to, but after that, probably it's probably going to be same genry. I agree, even it's probably who, what they're just doing. We'll have the models, the models that.
Yeah. Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, I got one, one model that's just a rough, you know, what it, what it looks. Yeah, and then the other models, you know, something that's probably looks with cool in there, you know, whatever it be. Master tees and there's.
Man, I would like to try to keep it on the. That's just incredible.
Does the township provide street lighting back there? I'm, I'm not that familiar with it at night. I've been through there a lot, but.
I do not think.
We've, we've, we've been there and.
I think you guys are paying for your lights.
Okay.
They turn them on.
They did turn them on. Okay, all right. There is a pond acre. I didn't know if I'm down behind the head of my. I don't think, I don't think a side road, the main, the main road had.
Yeah, it might just be the one move.
The one going around in that loop, yeah. And well, for us, what we're, what we have on there is every one of those buildings has. Has the door. Yeah, they're pretty great. I can imagine, I picture the, of the one on in North Shores there. Will have their own lights across that, they, they, you know, nice street out and they're the, all fronts of our door.
I think, I think you answered this. I remember the answer. Isn't it likely that people will buy these, then rent them out?
There, there's a possibility that somebody could buy one and then rent it out.
Or multiples.
Or multiples, but the one, there's one building in North Shores where somebody bought the whole building.
Okay.
And they leased that out and they, um, they put different, they're six doors. One person owns it all, other than. And, um, I think the guy that actually built the stuff, he has one also.
Yeah.
So he sold, sold the whole building to somebody and, and they leased it out.
But there's no restriction from a developer standpoint, okay?
I think it's a really interesting concept. Something that's needed, that's for sure.
I think, I hope it is. Because there's still my upfront that goes into the sewer. It's just friends, all the crazy stuff that you do before you ever get a building done.
I can only imagine the paperwork you have.
Oh, my gosh. It's insane. It is. It really is. It's crazy.
Anyone have any other questions?
Does the, that's split here, is here, but does the fire department officially approve or is there a signature? Do they just, because we never hear from them.
No, so it was part of the step before and I had followed it with the chief after that.
Thank you.
And said, he thought it was within, within the Black Commission's authority, obviously it is. And then it was the planning commission's decision.
Right, because then we, oh, because there's, was it, there's only changes to board meeting last night, that was last, that was last night. I said, yeah, I think there's only changes in.
Yeah, we're. Yeah, Jeff, there's, uh, breaking setback between those. Correct.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a. Admins and the others, in girls, uh, nothing?
But it's the PUD, it goes to the board too as well.
Those, the PUD and the, the condominium and the final site plan will both go to the board.
Of course, do these have, uh, are they accessible to gas lines?
They are. Yes, yeah, so they'll be, um. It could be. Um, there'll be gas, electric, um, there'll be air conditions, uh, heated and water sewer. All, all of those, everything will be in there.
Does each one of them get outfitted that way? Oh, that's nice.
Each unit. So pretty as you can imagine, is that two one?
I'll opt you if a guy wants a low, low end box.
Right, exactly. And then they could, and then, and also what we did was, is we switched, while we were doing the power. I don't care, you know, some people have three phase, some equipment runs three phase. And we had all single phase put in there and we switched it to three phase. So now it's, we've upgraded that, so. It would be pretty nice. I mean, it would be pretty nice.
All right. And one, I appreciate all the details.
This is again, we have to have one little brief discussion on there. Casey, you said you're going to abstain on this one?
Correct.
So that's, but she will not be voting on this. It would be our, our weight to carry. But if someone would like to?
I'll make a motion to recommend that board, township board approve the final site plan. Final site development plan for the parcel given, which is Vegas land and hind road. Further move to recommend that the township approve that the bolded condominium. At the, at the mention parcel.
Let's forward. You shake a wall call and vote. I'll just still call you Casey, just to.
Okay.
Dave?
Yes.
Uh?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Casey?
Same.
Who's forward to the board?
Okay, well, thanks. I gotta say, it's, it's really been a pleasure dealing with this township and all you guys. It's, can't imagine the whole thing was going to be down the road and.
Yeah, I can't imagine. We have heard some good things about and we appreciate that, because it wasn't always that way.
Oh, it, it, it really is not. I'm telling you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, two. SPR twenty-four dash twelve for newer road upgrade pavement to gravel. Do you have something here for that?
Bruce Hanks camp sixty-seven ten. What do you want? We don't talk about roads a lot.
We do.
Well, I.
We do, we don't.
Steve was, didn't really know where to go with this. He says there were a bunch of parcels from easement and then there was a little bit of, uh, property there. It's kind of no man's land that's really under the township's custody. And like I say, he just wasn't really sure where to go with this. It's kind of straightforward, but we want to make sure that we kind of had the right people looking at it. And I did bring in some documentation from the, was it Eagle now? For, um, two different times they had requested that don't township assist in any way they could. Painted that section of Miller Road to contain the runoff through a drain that goes out into North Lake. Right now that, that drain pumps muddy water in the North Lake every time we, there's good rain. Obviously, this asphalt would take and engage that particular issue. And now at the other end of the road, we've got a property owner that every time it rains, it's, right way it gets flooded over because of the way that the situation. And so the asphalt maybe be directing some water. That may always be a problem for him. Also clean up the dust and.
Is this a collaboration on the neighborhood?
Yes.
Willing to pitch in and pay for it?
Yeah, I think there's a, I think there's nine neighbors that are involved. There are, tell them, oh, thirteen, oh, thirteen neighbors that have property on there. Um, four of these neighbors, uh, just have property. There's one, Cotty and John, that's used occasionally. Another one's a lot. Another one is just a, uh, up a acre lot. And, uh, but those, all those properties are on the, the no man's land, if you will. But two of their down there is nine properties, uh, where it's easement. By the easement and all of these, or most all of these, um, papers actually have all rewritten checks for the project. But we did have some concerns about, um, you know, was the township good with this? There were just some concerns of was the township good with this? Did I need any permitting? Or, you know, what did I need to do?
Right.
To make sure that there wasn't any issues.
Who's liable for these screw ups?
Yeah. I will.
For this one, we are actually doing a, it says we're to do a site plan review. It's the first, um, the appropriate way to approve. And I guess is, approve this, when are we doing it then? Are we sending it through for a public hearing or is this going here, we're approving it tonight to move forward? I believe it can just be approved tonight. Okay, that's what. So this was, it was an odd situation, so part of why Stephen forgot this. As Bruce knows, because he wasn't sure exactly what to do with it. And the road commission wouldn't really offer advice on that. Once you get beyond their line, they, they don't care. And it was just, it ended up in an odd realm, uh, as we've had, you know, we have a number of roads that are odd as far as the legality of them goes. And this happens to be one of, obviously Bruce, Bruce wants to move forward with trying to improve the road. There were some concerns from neighbors, some handling water, that type of stuff, which is why he, uh, had brought forward this for the site plan approval. Essentially, this was people's opportunity to forward speak if they wanted on the issue, that type of thing. We do have something on the water, so. That's good.
Can I assume that the county doesn't maintain this plowing or anything?
Nope.
They used to, they used to, and the township used to pay for that. For that maintenance.
Yeah.
On the private portion of it. And then somebody within the township decided, or didn't decide, but they found that it was illegal for the township to pay for maintenance, county to do maintenance on a private road.
Yeah.
Makes sense. So they don't have the authority to spend that money like that. So the county sent us all letters that says, go here, do what you want with it.
Well, that's all on you guys to figure out, snow removal and all that stuff.
We hired, I hired a guy a long time ago to do snow removal. So, pretty small. He hired that man.
And on a private road, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I just collect money.
Yep.
The other guy plows the road. We made him so much every time he plows and.
Well, as close you can get to homeowners association as.
Without the association.
Yes, which is nice.
That was my next question.
Yeah. I don't want anything to do with the homeowner's.
Service gentleman's handshake. I'm not playing lawyer here, but somebody slips, it's the, it's a tree, whatever. Is that the township issue, right? It's. I don't know. I'm trying to manage it.
It's just like, it's no different, it's no different than it is right now. It's really.
It's like a driveway, really.
Think about it, it's no different than me going out and having a contractor come in and bring in a hundred yards of gravel. Only the asphalt is more permanent than what the gravel is.
I apologize for not site visiting this yet. I, I will do that. Does this dead end?
Yes.
So there's a turnaround? Okay.
It dead ends into a, somebody's house.
Okay.
There's no cul-de-sac or anything.
Right. So, okay, so it's really a driveway, community driveway, neighborhood driveway.
Yep.
I'm trying to.
Private, private easements is just originally through, the first part was set up through Wallace Beach. And they earmarked twenty foot of road right away. And Wallace Beach ends at my property and from my property or it's just a series of private easements since twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty foot of private easement and that's recorded on your deed.
I think I know where this is though. Yeah, okay.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve SPR twenty-four dash twelve.
Support.
All right. All right, let's go ahead and take our vote on that. Dave, yes? Uh?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the last one, real quick here, here's the situation. This is a draft ordinance that I asked Steve to take a look at. We had a thing with his own zoning board that came through and we have an area out there, this is kind of at the end of River Road. Where it, it, it used to be that road that came out onto M one twenty right there by OMA or OEM, um.
Yeah.
Cross from Roberts. Kind of on, on that one twenty. And now it's closed in that direction. It goes in and shut down. That's right behind there. And there's a road back there. People own the property and they want to buy and put a mobile home on that property. However, the mobile home pitch is three twelve. And we require a four twelve. If you drive that area over there, there's several other mobile homes that are in there. And just going down River Road and then turning and taking, I can't remember what that next road up there. Several more in there. And it, and we're literally talking an unnoticed difference. There's not anything with that. And it's, the idea was, um, they think at one time, the reason they did that, said I'll pitch roofs, they have to be four twelve is that it would eliminate the ability to put a modular home onto a lot.
Are we, are we speaking of a modular home or a mobile? Are we, are we speaking of a modular home or a mobile home?
Both.
What do you mean both?
It can be both, they're both at three twelve, you can buy them, you can, you can pay to have a four twelve roof put on a, one of the homes, but it's a substantial upcharge, because it is a special purchase and a special pri- process. So, the question being made, is this something we need to look at? And, and you know. It's, there's literally, you can't still difference from, uh, and, so, our thing is, we were, we're gonna have to go do, we have, we couldn't, because it doesn't show hardship, it doesn't meet certain things with ZBA, you know. So, we're trying to find a way to do this, so at this point, we're trying to make a decision, does it make sense with housing being the way it is? Is there any reason they are kept the same as a house, they're basically, everything with them is the same as a house?
We shouldn't be telling people what the roof has to look like, between them and their, when we're building it, I don't care at all.
So in this case, we would just like to move forward, I told them I thought that we would be able to do this, and they will be coming to the next. Meeting after we do this, Steve would be contacting them to tell them that the home that they already found, that was a great deal, we could get, we had to tell them, our home, because they couldn't, yes, to put on a lot. And we couldn't go ahead and ZBA, because we would then be going against this. We'd rather see if we could change this, so we could say yes, for this process, and Stephen could approve it.
My motion to approve the draft ordinance amendment, removing the roof pitch requirement for dwellings and schedule a public hearing for August twenty-seventh, the, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, planning commission meetings.
Support. Casey? And Lee? All right, take a roll call vote.
Can I be involved in this, if I'm not gonna be here for the points, so? I just want to be super careful, considering my district.
That's a good question.
I believe you, you didn't vote, I don't think it'll make a difference, cause I think on these hearings, there's different types of voting, and I believe on the hearings, you have to have a majority of the board. A majority of the people that were at the hearing, or anything like that, but would you not? It shouldn't make a difference.
Yeah, cause I just want to be super careful.
You have to, I agree, that would be.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Dave, yes? Todd, yes? Lee?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
All right, you'll move forward with that one.
I agreed to, was putting it to the next meeting, so, whatever happens to the next meeting, doesn't matter.
I'm gonna be the, everybody's person, my name alone.
This time, I do make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, I will do that, Casey, all those favors, say aye?
Aye.
Polls? Thank you, guys.
I think that was a big one. I did that thing out, and I got the, considering everything, it wasn't very hostile.